Thing to be added or subtracted from the agenda? Well, everything's here this time for Platts.
We'll approve of all the agenda.
Alright, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
And we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Alright, motion carried. We can go around with the conflict of interest declarations. If you want to start us off, Kathy?
None. Nelson, none.
Kettering, none.
Barkle, none?
Loest, none.
Michael, none?
None.
Alright. No conflicts of interest, so first-gen item is at 7:05. 7:02, so we have a few minutes to kill.
Let me see if I can reboot this and maybe that'll do what it's supposed to do. Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, it doesn't seem to want to connect. So can we move forward without the screen tonight?
Yeah, I guess we'll have to try and make do without it. Um, I'm assuming everybody got a chance to go over what was in the packet, so uh, should be fairly familiar with it if you don't have it in front of you. So, the first agenda item is the bi-conditional use permit. The applicant wishes to install a wind energy conversion system in an agricultural district per Article 5, Section 507, and Article 26, Section 2603. Said property is legally described as the east half of the northwest quarter, except for the west 175 feet, east 594 feet, of the south 267 feet in Section 36, range 93 north, township 54 west of the 5th PM Yankton County, South Dakota.
Alright, Mr. Bai would like to, uh, install a small energy system. Wind energy conver- conversion system. Um, it falls under the conditional use permit because it's over 80 feet tall. If it was 80 feet or shorter, it would just be a permitted use. We have the checklist, the setbacks. It is 128, 28 feet tall when you measure to the tip of the blade. Um, he submitted a, in his CUP, the setbacks would be met. We actually had him change the location so that he could meet the current setbacks.
And what are those setbacks? That you're, you're guiding?
1.1 feet. 1.1 times the height of the wind turbine?
Yes.
And do they have to be a quarter mile from a home?
Not the, not this one.
Okay, so, the only reason I ask is when you look, this is an ag district?
Yes.
So, Section 2603, 1I is where you talk about the ag district. And there's the, the clause about being 80 feet.
Yes.
All other W E C S in ag districts are provided in Section 2605. So does that mean now we go to 2605 and we have to follow those? Because it's over 80 feet?
Well, the director and I discussed it and looked at all the, all the different requirements and felt that given it's only 15 kilowatts, as opposed to a large uh, wind energy conversion system, that the setbacks to be followed should be the smaller.
So where does it? Okay, so I guess under the definitions in the section where it's small wind energy, energy conversion, where it says um, not more than 100 kilowatt?
Yes.
That's where you're getting that?
Yes.
So, when would we follow the sentence there that, in I, at what point do we follow that?
The way we read it was extended for large energy, wind energy conversion systems.
But if it was large, we wouldn't be in the small wind energy section?
I understand, we just, looking at the entire project, felt it was more, uh, respons- more responsible, um, undue requirements to go with the smaller setbacks.
I don't disagree with that, but the problem is, are, we have a sentence here in our ordinance, and just because we don't like the sentence, or we don't think it's fair, the sentence is there. So we have to figure out if that sentence applies. And if it does, we have to go to Section 2605. And if it doesn't, then we can stay in this section.
I agree with Sherry, because when I was looking at this, I was confused by that.
I mean, that's one reason we want to go over this in January, is, is to clean all of this up. But right now, it's in there. Now, I, I did bring my permit for a, a wind thing, but it was less than 80 feet. So, ours, when we applied over 10 years ago, qualified under 2603. And in fact, we could have done it administrated, but we went ahead and got the CUP. But it wasn't over 80 feet.
What is the output of it, Bill?
15 kilowatt.
15, I mean it's...
So, in 2605, it says a rated capacity of more than 100 kilowatts?
Yep, and I think the only reason I surmise that it's in there is because they felt 80 feet, puts you in another category of requirements. That's the only thing I can figure, and I don't know, I mean, when you go, for 15 kilowatts, I mean, you're, you're looking at all kinds of stuff, you know, the lighting, the, the access, the, I mean, there's, there's just all kinds of stuff listed there that I agree should not apply. But right now, we're supposed to follow the code.
And we also have conflict in 2605 on the applicability, where it's single tower height greater than 80, which we meet. And then also rated capacity more than 100 kilowatts, which we don't meet.
What is the definition of administrative building permit?
For an administrative building permit?
An adminis- what is the definition of an administrative building permit? Isn't that the one, just like we talked about, to lighten the load up so that when somebody came in and they met the requirements that the zoning officer made?
That's what all of our building permits are, they're administrative.
Technically, by going that route, he wouldn't have to be in here for a CUP if his tower was less than 80 foot.
Correct.
So he's in here asking for a CUP.
Because it's 128?
At the tip of the, of the blade.
Yep.
The 1.1 made it 128, no, it was 116.
Okay, thank you. 1.1, gotcha. Thank you. I think we, we discussed, because there are conflicting things, we chose to go that way because we thought it was the fairest. It's a, you know, a little over 100 feet, it's only 15 kilowatt. It's not like a, it doesn't need any FFA requirements, because it's short enough. It folds down flat on the ground for servicing. So we just felt like that was the, the best way to move forward, but it's your decision, so we will abide by whatever you think is right.
Nothing's been done, nothing's been built on it, no.
It's just waiting.
On site?
I don't know if they've delivered it yet or not, no.
So if it's not going to be built till March?
We won't have it changed by then, but we'll know where we're going. Hopefully.
So I guess at this point, as, um, planning commission, we either have to decide to move forward with it and either treat it as a small, small, uh, ener- wind energy conversion system, following requirements in 2603, but being in conflict with 23, 2603, 1I. Or we can treat it as being, um, under the larger commercial wind energy systems, and being under 2605, but being in conflict with 2605-1. Or we can postpone it to a later date. When we clean some of this up.
So what happens if you grant the permit and make a note of the conflict? That's what you'd have to do, and so you could, you could say, and cite the, um, the specific section, 2603, 1I conflicts with 2605-1, in that 2605-1 says that section's applicable to three things, three things are required. And that would be the only way you could do it, but you'd have to specifically say, essentially, the, this one, of the three prongs, in that second section, it only meets one of the prongs. It's not for offsite, you're not selling the power, correct?
Well, right now, it's gotta go back online, because I don't have any storage.
Okay.
The primary use is your.
Primary use, the primary goal is private, I mean, you're not, you're not acting as a commercial. I know, I have solar, tell me about it. And the rated, uh, so the rated capacity is greatly below the 100 kilowatts.
Could that be noted in the findings of fact?
That would have to be noted, and I would even go so far as to make it as part of the motion.
Yes.
Yep.
To make it clear that we realize there's a conflict in the ordinance, so that we're at least addressing it.
That makes sense.
By having it stated in the, in the motion like that.
In the motion itself.
Basically covers you for any conflict in it, for the fact that we realize that it doesn't, it's conflicting with the, the next.
Correct.
They kind of conflict with itself.
Correct. And, and so you'd have to be very clear about making that first motion on that. I would be curious, do we have anyone who opposes it?
I haven't heard from anybody, and I don't know if there's anybody here, no, I don't think so.
Okay, because if someone opposes it, then that throws another wrench in it too.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, you know, part of it is, you have to talk to the utility company, and I've had a couple conversations with Chris, Chris from Clay Union. Rex has already started the application process, and they'll work it in. In fact, there's a document in, in the packet, in the PUC, that says they have to connect to it. So he's, he's taking care of all the other requirements. It's just, this is the, the question.
Yeah, I guess reading through the ordinance, the only thing that really throws it into conflict is that last sentence in, in 2603, 1I. So, I guess, just reading it, the intent, to me, sounds like, the intent was that if it's under 80 feet, you can just do an administrative permit. If it's over that, we gotta go through this, because otherwise, I mean, there's no need for 2603 at all, for an ag zone district. It'd be irrelevant, because it's either administrative or goes to 2605, if you're gonna use that last sentence. So I think the intent was that anything over 80 feet, you go through this if it's a small system, and
That's what we're.
I would guess I would be in favor of moving forward using 2603, as long as it's all noted, like Sherry was saying. And I guess that's something that needs to be noted and cleaned up when we go through the solar ordinance, or the wind ordinance.
And I, I had some discussions with Kerry, who's part of the team that sells these wind towers. And I, I sent some information to you. And part of it is, this is kind of a, you know, they changed the heights on some of these. Everybody thinks 100 feet is so big, well, 200 feet is where the FAA starts. And so it's kind of a, a new thing, so.
I guess does everybody else feel like it's okay to move forward with 2603, as long as we're noting it? Or is there any reservations about that?
I think it's a good idea to, like, was brought up about putting it in the motion, and all the reasoning behind why we're doing that, just so that it's kind of bookmarked for when we come back and revisit this to modify, in order to make the changes or whatever, that we can implement that right into it and, not deal, not get into it again. I think, you know, it's always hard, and we've found that in so many things since this thing started, was to always outguess what everything is gonna happen, every situation is going to come up with. You know, and I, this particular thing, I guess that, they know that I questioned about was the fact that this, you know, even from the setbacks and things like that, in a tornado, or a windstorm, or whatever type of thing, this is a far safer thing to fall down than a 50,000 Bushel Green Bin going across the country. You know, or like 5,000 campers on 52 going across. I mean, the, this is on their own property, so, um, but I think that that's a, it's a pertinent idea to put that right into the motion.
I got my pen ready. So you wanna go through any more questions you have, um, or have the applicant come up and answer any questions, or, go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to step through then, 2603, and take public comment and everything.
Oh, okay. If you wanna go through your checklist?
Yeah, so, we've identified 2603-1, 26-2. The 1.1 is 128 feet, and he will meet that from any structure. Access, climbing steps don't start until 10 feet, but as I mentioned, this actually folds down, two of the sides, or two of the corners have hinges, and they just lower it down to work on it. And so having a fence around it doesn't seem, um, appropriate. Noise, it's only 48.5 decibels, which is below the 55. 5A. Um, he's got some, and that's too much for me to explain, but the documentation is in the packet. Compliance with building codes. We have, we have drawings on all the engineering of it. The B will be in coordination, I think, with Clay Union when it's hooked up, to make sure everything is hooked up, because he can't put it up until he's able to hook onto Clay Union, so that'll be all done at the same time. F8, number seven, it's not applicable because it's under 200 feet. So there's no, no lighting necessary. Um, national electrical code, he's included documentation with that. Number nine, utility notifications, as I mentioned, I've had a couple discussions with Chris from Clay Union, and there's a letter in there saying he's aware of it. Um, this is kind of new for them, so they had to create an application process. And so they did that, and Rex has started that. And so he's, he understands that even though he may get the conditional use permit, until that application is complete on their end, he can't move forward, so he can hook right, right up to the grid right away. And then, 10, he'll have the shutdown procedures posted, and he understands 11A and B, and he agrees to 12. I don't have those specific. Can I borrow yours for a second? Yeah, warning information, the site reclamation, and the federal and state requirements. So where are those? Any other questions? And Mr. Bai is here, if you have any questions for him.
Um, I guess going through the other checklist in our packet, the ingress and egress to it is just gonna be through the farmyard and?
Yes.
Up to it. Not really any off right-of-way parking loading areas, other than service, adequate space around it.
If you could see on, like, a get beacon up there, he has his farmstead, which is a small lot, and then he owns the land around it. So this will be on that second piece, the bigger piece, so he's got plenty of room.
And it looks like it's gonna be, I guess from the pictures in the packet, it looks like it's going to be located on the west side, where then, there's two long buildings there?
Yes, originally, he wanted to do it on the east side, and he couldn't meet the setbacks. So he worked, worked it out, and he's putting it on the west side, so he has a little more room to meet those.
And then, I guess the utilities has been addressed, as far as hooking into those. No screening or buffering required.
There are some trees nearby, but with a wind tower, you can't have screening too close to it, because it creates a wind shear, so you have to be a certain distance away from trees. And structures, I believe, yeah.
Um, address the exterior lighting, there's no signs or anything else?
Um, he'll have to post those requirements, um, for shutting down and things like that, other than that, and any other warnings that are required by the utilities commission.
Required yards is just the setback of the 1.1.
Yes.
General compatibility with adjacent properties in the district. I guess there hasn't been any complaints.
No, and there, there aren't many, it's pretty spread out over, south of Gayville is where it's going. So it's fairly spread out in that area. But no, nobody has called or even asked about it.
Alright, there's not really anything else in the checklist, anybody else got any questions?
You need to ask for public comment.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were ready for a motion.
Nope, I'm asking if there's any questions.
No, you're good, no, you know, I don't, I don't have any more.
Alright, thanks, Bill. Alright, so I'll open up for public comment, I guess Rex, if there's anything you want to add? Come on up and say it, or?
Um, I don't have a speaker.
Okay.
If you've got anything, that's your answer.
Alright, is there any other public comment?
I did get two phone calls from, uh, renters, the rent, uh, state owners, they were concerned it was a wind farm, you know, and after I told them what it was, they just didn't care.
Okay. Alright, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close, public comment. Uh, board discussion, um, if you have any other questions for Rex or Bill, now would be the time. Yeah, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion.
I'm trying to figure out how to say it.
So don't anybody second it, but, um, it should say something like, because there is a conflict in applicability between 2603-1I and 2605-1, move approval based on findings of fact for Sections 1805 and 2603. Is that enough?
Because basically, if it wasn't, if it wasn't over 80 feet, and without that conflict in there, it would be an administrative move anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that pretty much covers it.
And so at the end, we could, we could add a line that says, because this application aligns more with 2603 versus 2605. And we also have the discussion of record. So I'll read that one more time, because there's a conflict in applicability between 2603-1I and 2605-1, move approval based on findings of fact for Sections 1805 and 2603, because this application aligns more with 2603 versus 2605.
Second.
There you go.
Alright.
If you want to take a photograph of my chicken scratch, you can, Bill.
Oh no, I'm gonna watch the video tomorrow.
Oh, there you go.
Unless the video didn't work, then I'm gonna call you.
Alright.
I got part of it.
Got a motion in a second, and we can do a roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loest?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yep.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Clark?
Yeah.
Alright, motion carried.
Alright.
Alright, so, next item, we are on to the Platts. First one is Peterson Platt. You wanna take it away, Bill?
Yep, so this is, we, we approved a CUP for a second house in Lakeside Commercial, a while back. They're, they've got the building permit, they're building it, now they want to just separate it, so each, each parcel has, each house has its own parcel. So they divided it, not quite in half, each one has at least an acre, meets the minimum requirements, just cleans up the whole thing, they both meet the required setbacks.
Is this the one on West 11th?
No, this is, uh, 52.
52, oh, okay, now I remember, yeah.
Great Chris, Ruth.
He moved here to help with his family, yeah.
Right past from Chris.
So they're just cleaning it up, so that if something happens in the future... So they're just cleaning it up, so if something happens in the future, it's clean.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Alright, motion in a second, vote when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright. Next up is Dumont Holdings preliminary plat.
You'll have to have a motion to untable this, because we tabled it last time.
Doesn't count that we had proved an agenda with it on?
No, you still have to untable it. I, we went through the state's attorney, just to make sure we had everything.
I make a motion to put it back on the table.
Second.
Alright, motion in a second to retable the Dumont Holdings preliminary plat and the, and the...
One, two, three, five, seven, and eight lots, so...
Well, we gotta vote.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Alright, go ahead, Bill.
So after discussing this with numerous parties, what they decided to do is take that strip that's in a contest. And we designated that as possible adverse possession claim, you can see that on the plat. What will happen is if, assuming it goes to court, and there's a judge's decision, if Dumont Holdings wins, they're going to have to correct their plat. And a deed correction on those lots that are adjoining it. If Mr. Doan wins, he's gonna have to replat his to include that strip, so we don't have a non-conforming strip there.
Okay, so when I look at the preliminary plat versus finalized plat of lots. I see the possible adverse possession strip there of twenty-four feet, but it looks like that's not being included in any of those lots right now?
In the preliminary, no, because the preliminary is not recorded, so they didn't think it was necessary to put it on there.
No, but I'm talking the finalized, it looks like that, that strip is excluded away from any of those, so it's gonna be just an extra strip of land there. And those lots that are along it are going to have to replat at some point?
If they win the adverse possession, they'll have to correct the plat and the deed to add that strip.
So like when I look at this, it's lot one, eight, nine, fourteen.
Yes.
Those ones might have to correct it, or on the opposite side, they'll have to correct theirs.
Correct.
But right now, we're...
So that, when it's, when the judge makes a ruling, it's gonna be eliminated, that strip will be added to one side or the other, so there's, it's conforming.
So right now, though, the plat that we're approving is leaving that strip out of any of the lots?
Yes.
And those lots are still conforming without that strip?
Yes.
Okay. Both parties were good with that solution?
Well, I don't think Mr. Doan knows about it, but we talked with Dumont Holdings, their attorney. We all discussed what were the best way to move forward, the surveyor, and this was the logical way to do it, if there's no resolution on that strip. So we're addressing, and you can put it in the motion too, that whoever wins the possible adverse possession claim has to replat to include that strip. If you want to make it cleaner.
The important thing is whoever's buying the lot understands there's a conflict.
Yep, and that'll be on the plat they buy, yeah, and that's up to Dumont Holdings to make sure they know that. So, but we, we thought this was the fairest way, so they can move forward with their transactions, and it, you know, it leaves it open for the judge to make his ruling, so.
And then I guess I kind of have a question, why do we have a preliminary and a final plat?
So normally, normally, a contractor or developer would do a preliminary plat on the whole thing, this was kind of a rush deal, because people wanted to buy it. So by the time they got ready for the preliminary, they already had five people wanting to buy lots, so they're just getting it done right away, so they can sell those before the end of the year. Taking care of business. But we'll have to make a, a motion for each, one for the preliminary and one for the final.
Yep, and I guess right now, we are discussing the preliminary.
Correct. If there are any questions, Mr. Breck is here to answer those. He doesn't want to come up here, but...
Is there any other discussion, are we ready for a motion?
I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move approval of the preliminary plat.
Second.
Alright, roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Alright, so now we are on to the Dumont Holdings plats of lots one, two, three, seven, and eight. Forest Lake subdivision, northwest quarter of the northeast quarter, section thirteen. T ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM, Uton County. Alright, so same thing that we just discussed.
So this is where that adverse possession claim is gonna play in, they're gonna sell these lots. If he wins, they're gonna have to come back and do a deed correction and add that land, and then replat those lots. But it only affects those four on the east side.
It says adverse what?
Possible adverse possession.
Possession. So I would move approval of the Dumont plat for one, two, three, seven, and eight, noting possible adverse possession.
Second, Bill.
Alright, we can vote when you're ready.
Excuse me. Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Alright. Onto Stoudemire replat, lot thirty-eight, is this one that was, been on here for a few months?
This one is, several owners, and they live all over the place, but this one's a little more interesting, so it's not changing any boundary lines. He's replating it to remove easements that were there that he was unaware of when he purchased it. We've met with the state's attorney and his attorney, because this lot was platted by itself and not with the rest of them. He's allowed to go in and change those, it doesn't take any access away from anybody, it just makes his lot more usable. So, he still meets our setbacks.
What type of easements were on there?
Well, there's a lot where the fireworks stand is, there was an access all the way across, but he has access from Sunrise Drive. So it really wasn't necessary, and it made it very difficult for Mr. Stoudemire to build anything in that. Was there, was there any other one, there was another one, wasn't there, or is that the only one?
Well, there was one along the back, and there was one along the front, but I think there were a couple deficiencies, the easement, neither one of them referenced who the easement is actually in favor of, it just said easement.
And so like I mentioned, that lot to the east has access off Sunrise, the big lot behind them has another access off of East Side Drive. So everybody still has their access, this is just making it easier for him to build what he needs to build.
Unless there's any more questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Alright, we can vote when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Alright, next is Fring plat, plat of Adam Fring's addition, north half, northeast quarter, section eight. Township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM.
This is just kind of clearing up some family land, dividing it up between siblings, I believe. What they've divided off meets the minimum requirements, it's zone DAG, what he surveyed off is forty-one point six three one acres, and he has access to it, so...
Pretty straightforward. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Alright, Fear plat, lot six, being replatted, lots three and four, block one Kaiser overlook subdivision, north half, northeast quarter, northwest quarter of section fifteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM.
Mr. Fear owns two lots on the end of April Lane, I believe, adjoining, his house is on one, he wants to add a garage, but it would cross the property line. So he's combining the two, so he can extend his garage, the good part is, it takes two non-conforming lots and makes it into a conforming lot. So, bonus.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Back.
Oh, I'll give it to Dan.
Okay.
Absolutely, this is a pretty straightforward one.
Alright, go ahead and vote when you're ready.
So, who, they bid at the same time, should I give it to Dan and then you second?
Yeah, give it to Dan.
Okay. Barkle.
Yes.
Loost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
Alright, we are on to the Article twenty-six discussion. Do you have anything new, Bill, or?
Well, no, I thought some of you may want to add some stuff before they do get into the, but the information I sent out was interesting, and then I did a lot of research. There is a trend towards smaller wind energy systems that are a little taller. And there are some, some different groups that have come up with recommendations for setbacks and things like that. Kind of a guideline, if you're, if you're creating or amending your ordinance, and I'll try to put some of those together. But one of the things they addressed was, a lot of these towers are engineered, they're supposed to collapse on themselves, so having a huge setback can be difficult. And the other thing with Mr. Bai was, because he had to move it further away than he wanted, he had to switch the type of cables or wires that ran to it, had to upgrade them. So a lot of them with the smaller ones have a setback from a dwelling or a primary building, but when it comes to those back structures, they're not as strict. Because it's not supposed to collapse on them, and most of the time, the farmers don't care. So that's just something to think about. One of the things I did read was, if, even if the FAA says it's, you're not required to have lights, they say you can't have lights. So you might want to add that, that anything under the two hundred feet...
They're not allowed to have lights?
Yep, so I'll, I'll send it to you again, but the FAA regulations say that if, if it's over two hundred, you have to light it according to their rules. If it's under, you can't have any artificial lighting. And I'll try to provide that, I, I don't know what the purpose of that is, confusion, or, but it was just something I thought was interesting. So I think setbacks are a big one, and even Clay Union said they've never had one of these towers. You know, they've either been really small, we, I don't think we've had any really big ones, but this is kind of a new area, they're going to a little bit taller to avoid structures and trees, because of the wind shear, gets it above it. And so, we may have to address, is a hundred foot a permitted use instead of eighty foot, just something to think about. And I'll try to kind of come up with a list of all the recommendations that these different entities came up with, as kind of a guideline, just to look at.
That could be something too, where you talk about the actual tower height, but then when you go to the top of the blade, you know, how much, how big do they get, you know, on top of that structure, you know, to go?
Yeah, these blades, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The picture that you showed of Rex's deal, you know, it looked like a little Piper Cub airplane on top of the thing, and, and basically, all it was was a tractor generator with the fan, or with the blades attached to it. Where we look at the big commercial ones, and, I mean, that's a huge thing up there, above the ground, you know, that...
Well, with the big ones, there are regulations, how close those blades can go, and they're with the small too, but they're so small that they, it's not even an issue.
Yeah, and I, that's the thing, but I guess, you know, when you're, when you're starting to set a, a height limit, you know, even in the small ones. You are gonna just include the tower or the total height with the blade?
Total.
Maybe the total blade, so then you might want to look at higher, you know, a little bit taller than a hundred feet, just for the simple fact of...
True, you know, his with the one, one times, one point one times was one hundred and twenty-eight feet. So it's somewhere between, you know, a hundred foot for the tower, probably a hundred and sixteen with the blade or something, I'm not good on math on the spot, but, so it's not that big of a tower, really.
Well, like you, you were talking about the design made so they can lay it down to work on it, you know, that's gonna, that'll fall on the owner to have that setback or that requirement, to be able, be able to lay that tower down, because they will have to work on it at some point. You know, so they're gonna have to have a setback, or, you know, or at least have a free zone, a clear zone that they can lay that tower down in if they have to.
Want to backtrack too, I think part of the reasons they had the smaller setbacks from accessory structures, was so you were able to put a building next to it for controls. If you have a hundred, a hundred foot setback from building, your controls are gonna be way away from that small tower, that was another, another point I wanted to make. But I'll, I'll create a list of all the recommendations, even if they're conflicting, just so you can see what people have come up with, these groups have come up with.
So then the commission was asking for volunteers for task force on wind?
I think the, the commission has two, and I think there's two from the planning commission that have committed, I think you're willing to take one more from the planning?
No, I think Gary was supposed to advertise that.
For public.
Gets somebody out of the public.
And then I suppose if nobody agrees, then you can take more planning commission.
Which two county commissioners?
Ryan is one.
Ryan is one?
Were you the other one, Dan, or Don?
I might have been.
You are now.
I just remember it being Ryan, I don't remember anybody else.
I'm pretty sure Ryan.
I can't remember the other one.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was either you or Dan.
I don't think it was.
Anyway, we'll get that squared away, because I think Gary's supposed to bring that to the commission this next meeting, a week from today. So that we're ready to go in early January.
What about the pipeline thing?
I'm in favor of having them both go on at the same time, if can be done. I don't know that we have any imminent challenges with pipelines. But...
You never know.
Yeah.
It comes up pretty fast.
Well, that place in Lake Preston, at Gevo, they're building the big aviation fuel thing, but now they're saying that they're gonna pick up their toys and go if they don't approve a pipeline.
Well, I'd heard that.
Yeah.
I know we're not the only one, because we received a email from another county, they didn't have anything, and they're starting to work on the solar and the wind and all that, so I think there's gonna be more. I think Sherry did it with, with the solar, there's a lot of stuff out there we can look at and steal.
Beg and borrow, and, well, and see what's been done and what works, and what makes sense, and I think when we do this wind, if we can make it have the same framework as the solar section. I think that'd be to our advantage to do that, but Lincoln County right now is going through the pipeline deal, it'll be interesting up there, they're kind of an active county.
Yep.
And see how that comes out for them. There's a lot of signs out there.
I've read a couple articles on anti... I've read a couple articles on, uh, anti, uh, wind power. And, uh, they bring up a lot of questions on the, uh, when it's, when they're worn out. De, de, what is it, decommissioning?
Yeah, and that was one of the things that was discussed, you know, once it's, we kinda do this with, I think we do with solar. If it's not, or any CUP, if it's not active for twelve months consecutive, you have six months to remove it. You know, it's pretty cut and dry. How you prove it hasn't been active, I guess you'd have to contact the Utilities Commission, or that local utility and see if they've been taking any power or anything.
In the, in the process though, this is just a thought. But in the process of, say, somebody does not use that tower, the wind generation tower, but then someone like a telecommunications outfit comes along and wants to locate on that tower?
They'd have, they'd have to get a CUP, and I don't.
I know, I'm thinking you would have to, but I mean, it would, instead of making them tear it down again to repurpose that tower to another.
I don't know if that, and I'm not a engineer or anything, I don't know if that kind of tower would be used for that, but that would make sense, so that you're not just destroying something, you can repurpose it.
Cause a lot of those, you know, now, you know, used to see those big circular beam things out there, but now they've got them in long, you know, longer.
Well, you know what I would do? I would take it, cut it in half and make two tree stands.
Deer, deer forever.
Might still be pretty tall.
Further to shoot though.
Maybe four then.
As long as you don't fall.
Anyway, that's, that's what I had, I'll get you some more information, but I thought it'd be nice to get a bunch of information out there before the the task force starts, so they can look at things and have ideas, and when they hit the road running, or hit the ground running then.
Alright, is there anything else on Article twenty-six? Seeing none, we can move on to public comment. Is there any public comment? Nope. Alright, I'll close public comment. And I.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, you got a second?
Second.
You have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you, that was a tough one tonight. Nobody can ever say we don't, we're not thorough, right?
There's actually two of the plats in that Dumont holder.
Okay.
Still there, Dan?
Yeah.
Alright, well, we're done, so.
Okay. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks for checking in.
Yep.
Bye.
Bye.
Who was he? He was gone for a couple of months, wasn't he?
Where's he at? Do you know where he's at?
I don't.
I think it's three months, wasn't it?